For a biomedical, so it's already in place and we have one more class we have to add. And hopefully that will, that's under consideration. They've added more dual credit CTE courses, our welding courses, our YER have been in our dual credit. Of course, the celebration of the radio station. And when that happened and I sent it to the state, they're very excited. They would love to have something out this way because everything with TechEd is usually back towards Topeka. So hopefully sometime this year they'll have a drive-in or some type of training. If not this year, next year, because they really want to highlight what we've done there. And then, this is something that I'm not involved in very much right now. It's a grow your own in our teaching and the training. And I know that Mr. Hogan has talked about that. But really, we're looking at how can he help our students get their associates, leave our high school with that background, get their associates at Garden City Community College, and then go on to whatever four-year they want to articulate with 4Ks, 4U, State or K-State. Just to compare last year and this year, our numbers are up for career TechEd. Our unduplicated count, that means just what it says, unduplicated, fifteen hundred and one students out of about twenty-one sixty are in a TechEd class. And if you look at duplicated, almost twenty-six hundred students in a TechEd class. Very popular, very hands-on, and challenging, I hope a lot of them are challenging. Our Perkins allocation went up a little bit, but I can tell you, just from about six or seven years ago, it was around a hundred and thirteen thousand. So we're trying to, we're serving way more students, about a thousand more with about forty thousand dollars less. One of the other opportunities that we have is the partnerships that are growing. And I have to give credit to the building bridges, I have to give credit to our staff, because they're the ones that work with advisory councils. They invite classroom speakers in. They have our students go out to job shadow or in a work experience that's during school or after-school hours. We have many industry visits and company tours, and that would not be possible if we couldn't get them scheduled on the buses or the vans. Exterships for teachers during the summer, we usually have four to six teachers that go out in industry and learn a little bit more as far as what's the expectations are. So, all in all, partnerships are critical, I think, to the growth of our CTE program in all of our schools. And I think the community wants to be involved. Our next building bridges will be in January, tentatively, it's the last Monday of the month, but we'll have that set pretty quick, so. I think that's...
Quick question.
Yes, sir.
Job shadow, supervises that, how does that work?
Job shadow is individually or it's through the classroom. Work experience is through Mrs. Ackerman. But job shadow, the students can ask to job shadow. But in, for example, in the Energy Pathway, they all will job shadow. That's just an expectation in that class. So that's how that's set up. There aren't any, let's say, I guess, program or plan that everyone can go do, but anyone can do it if they ask, we can help get that set up. And from building bridges last year, there were approximately, I don't know, a hundred and fifty people that probably came. We were not sure on the count, but we had a hundred and two people that signed, business and industry people that signed up to say, "I will do something, I will do any of these things. I'll be on a council, I'll mentor a student, you could come job shadow at my place. A teacher can come spend a week and do an externship." So, they all volunteered. We had a kind of an end of that pathway, or end of that building bridges questionnaire, and they filled in their name and if they wanted to participate. So, hopefully that's going to improve and we're going to grow that as well. But we have to contact them and make sure that, you know, they know that, we know that they know that they did sign up and that, we appreciate that, so how can we use them? Because if you sign up for something and no one calls you back, you know, we want to make sure that we do let them know that we're planning some additional activities, whatever that might be, that they signed up to do.
Any other questions or comments?
Thank you.
[applause]
Mr. Carlin, the following transition. You know, to be a log district, it would be nice to be able to say that one of the inclusion points of that is to be able to have your students at graduation time saying they feel ready to do what they want to do in the next step of their life. If they're ready to enter the workforce, if they're ready to enter their chosen career path, or if they're ready, if they want to study more at college, then I think we've succeeded. And I think we have presented so many opportunities for our students to capture and to meet those personal goals in case that for themselves. You know, career in TechEd, youth entrepreneurs, even the added programs to teach kids how to organize so they can study and be more efficient when they have a higher work force load. You know, we have so many programs in place that really set up our kids to succeed in their chosen field. And it's not our goals, you know, it's theirs ultimately. We want to make sure that we can provide them what they need so that they're ready for the next step. So, I think we're doing amazing with the programs we have. So, thanks for what we're doing.
It's the staff, it's the staff.
It's the whole team.
Everybody in the board's support. It does take everyone, it really does. And the community as well, because they're letting us know what they need. Thank you.
Thanks.
Sorry, we'll go slow.
That's okay. Anyone else want to comment?
I did want to say that I think that career in TechEd is wonderful for our students, but it's also wonderful for our district because we invite all the businesses to partner with us. They don't understand what a full education is all about and why it's important to their students. So, it's critical to be able to develop. So, I think it has a lot of benefits.
We've let him get out of her leadership in that area.
Onto unfinished business.
KJ's not back yet, she might be back, but she said she trusts me to present this. So, one of the things we learned this year, some legislation that happened last spring is really requiring us to do our budget a little bit differently this year. So, back when the board approved the budget, we passed the budget this year with a motion. The new legislation basically requires that anytime that the assessment of local taxes goes up more than the Consumer Price Index, that the board needs to pass the budget with a resolution. And then we need, there's another little piece that will be published in a newspaper. It doesn't change what our mountain budget is, it doesn't change anything in the budget. It's just kind of the process that we have to go through. And I'll use this opportunity to point out again, the reason that our local taxes went up is because of block grant funding, which was also passed by the legislature this past spring. And that the result of that block grant funding is that it was a greater burden on our local taxpayer. From our calculations with KASB, had we been operating under the old formula system that we've used for about twenty-three years, or twenty-two, twenty-three years in this day, we would have actually not had to raise our bill of revenue, we would have had more dollars to work with to educate our kids. So, the purpose of this being on here is to make sure that we're following the appropriate steps under the changes that came about in the law. So, basically what we need to work to do tonight is to enlarge a copy of a resolution that the board needs to adopt in order to approve our budget for the year. And then we'll take care of the publication piece later this week. Questions?
See those questions? Do you have any questions?
Not really a question, but yeah, in summary, there's nothing here with this resolution. We're waving as far as responsibilities or opportunities, it's just simply for combined effect, changes.
So then, if I'm understanding correctly, we need to make a motion with Jean saying everything in the resolution?
They need to adopt the resolution. So, I think you read the resolution, the motion to adopt that resolution.
So, it's not a big motion.
They should read the resolution and then you need a motion to adopt it in a second.
Okay. The resolution reads as follows. Resolution, a resolution expressing the property taxation policy of USD 457 Garden City Public Schools with respect to financing the annual budget for 2015-16. Whereas KSA 79-2925B is amended provides that a levy of property taxes to finance the 2015-16 budget of USD 457 exceeding the amount levied to finance the 2014-15 budget of USD 457, as adjusted to reflect changes in the Consumer Price Index for all urban consumers per calendar year 2014, be authorized by a resolution. Now therefore be resolved by USD 457 in 2015-16 budget with levy of property taxes exceeding the amount levied in 2014-15, as adjusted pursuant to KSA 79-2925B as amended, is hereby adopted. And it goes on, adopted this 26th day of October 2015 by USD 457 Garden County, Kansas, Garden City Public Schools, and can be signed by the board president. Is there a motion to approve the resolution? I move, we approve the resolution. Motion by Jean, is there a second? Special by Mark. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All votes, same side. Motion carries. Right, Jean? Have there been any questions, your backup?
Perfect timing, KJ. Did they win?
The next is new business and discuss public comment time procedure. Dr. Carlin, you want to start this?
Sure. Earlier this fall, we had a situation where we had a person come and share some information in our public comment session. Basically, they were kind of crunched five minutes, time period that the board's used. And so, Laura asked that I look into that a little bit. And asked that we put this on the agenda so that we can discuss it, make sure that it's obvious to people that we do want participation in our meetings and we are interested in public things and the information that they want to share with the board. So, since you had a little bit earlier today, we actually do have a board policy that is BCBI that relates to public participation. And it does, it is consistent with our practice when people come to our meetings that there's a five-minute period where they can make public comments. But it also goes on that if we have an issue that may need a little bit more time with policy recommends at least five days prior notice, we can actually place that item on the agenda and allow ten minutes. And the board has the discretion to even allow additional time if the issue would require additional time. So, I think the board has a policy in place that might be tweaked that would allow for some latitude there. And I think that was kind of one of the concerns that we've all had, that we want to make sure that people would have an opportunity to address the board. But I've also sent you some guidance from KASB in terms of how that time is used and the intention of putting the item on the agenda tonight was to allow the board to discuss it in terms of looking through anything different in that time.
One of the things that Dr. Carlin and I and I take on from Jean, we discussed it at the agenda meeting, was the timing when we would be able to grant the extra time. And so, I'm not, right now, as the policy stands, it's five days. I don't know if we want to shorten that up a little bit because our agenda comes out Wednesday. That way, and of course, I don't know, five days could mean five business days, just five working days. So, Wednesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Sunday.
Maybe calendar.
Maybe calendar. Or if we wanted to maybe push that to Thursday or Friday before the meeting to allow for the public to be able to view the agenda. So, I mean, that's one thing that I was thinking about prior to seeing the policy on it. But I wanted just to at least discuss and see how we wanted to proceed. I don't think we've ever had a duplicate issue that we necessarily needed something like this, but knowing that the avenue is there for the public, I think, would be helpful. Laura, can I add that I think that paragraph D is very important. That basically if we hear a comment during the public comment time, if we want to have a discussion, not just a comment, but a discussion, we have the authority as a group to give them agenda time. So, I think we have a couple of examples. One that's, I can think of in the recent past that I think warranted a discussion, and it was time-sensitive because we were taking action on that issue that evening. And I think if we would switch the delegation's Q and A public comments to item B on the agenda, and then approval of the agenda to C. If we heard a statement from anyone, a public comment, and we wanted to entertain a discussion item, or discussion over that topic, someone could move to add them to the agenda for later that evening so we could actually do that conversation justice, if it's time-sensitive. Otherwise, we can add them to the agenda at a future meeting. But that would be an easy thing to do, just to make sure that we had the opportunity. Because I don't want to, I like our policy that we don't entertain a discussion and a debate during that time, but there are a lot of good points brought up during that opportunity. And I want to make sure that we do right by the public service, by the person who's bringing it forward to us. That's just a thought. I'm sorry, I was thinking.
I didn't want to interrupt.
Sorry.
You know, first of all, solid points, Gloria. And I commend you, Laura, for two things. First of all, when it first came up, sort of maintaining the position of the board that this is a board meeting and not a public hearing for. And so certainly, we want to conduct board business in an efficient and orderly manner. But then also come back and say, but there clearly is this need to consider timely information to the board, but also consideration of that information. And so, but in an orderly framework and still preserving the fact that this is a meeting for. And so, Laura's points, I think, are good to consider. And then, certainly, the policy we have, there may be an opportunity for revising that, reviewing that, if you would have articulated. So, I hope we continue this work. Because I think just the situation earlier that came up was just a highlight of, by the way, there are times when people would like to communicate with the board. In some cases, they don't know how to until they see the agenda, so. But this is all good.
I don't want timing to be a reason why we don't hear any board comments. What I'm wondering is, because part of these should be part of the regular, this heading of that because of delegation's question and answer, public comments, recognitions, and committee reports. Some of those, I think, should be part of the regular agenda. So, it should come after approval of agenda. But I'm wondering if delegations and public comments, because our language in the, which I'm not sure if I like either, says delegations, which to me sounds like more than one person coming, a big group of people's coming to address the board with a spokesperson or someone like that. But if we maybe move delegation and public comments to be, and then approve the agenda, and then, do we maybe, how would be between, committee reports and recognitions? And almost always, out of those seven years I've served, I can come up with one example of how we would have amended the agenda for that existing meeting. I mean, it's not going to happen very often, but it would protect us if we did want to do that.
I agree that we need all of the information that we're getting, that is the information that comes at the beginning of the approval of public comment. I think that's important because we do represent the community, we need to be able to go and try to make the best decisions. But I just don't understand, for technical reasons, how you can make part of what is on the agenda, or you approve it.
Which is what I was trying to... Yeah. And it was just an idea. I mean, we don't have to discuss this completely, but we can think about it and think if that's what we want to do, and then we'll figure out a way to do it if we're seven smart people. But you have, we do have the board open discussion. So, it seems like if there is something that was done in public comments, that that person could be invited, by a board member to participate, or to continue speaking in that discussion meeting. But that might be after action.
And you can always table action on some, if you hear something in the public comment that it comes into making a decision, you're not ready to make a decision. There's times we've taken three or four people to the board, ultimately made a decision. So, what if you did this, because I'm sure there's lots of ideas. If over the next week or two, if you have thoughts about this, communicate with me and I'll compile that and sit down with your two board officers, Laura and Jean, that Mr. Cohen is our policy expert. And that gives us a chance to connect with KASB and the loop, because we want to make sure our policy is legal. And if there's feedback that some changes are necessary, that gives you a little more time to go through the policy a little more closely. If there's some changes that we need to have them, we can bring it back here as a policy provision to go through the process, to use on the policy provisions.
Well, I think you can tweet now and then, it takes a little while to tweet. We've got, there's enough wiggle room. And I noted that, I was in high school when I was last advised, so we might want to revise it anyway, or at least show that we've reviewed it. And I think the point is, I can remember everybody specifically, that I think the consensus is that we want to hear what people have to say, that's the ultimate goal, and as timely as we possibly can. Okay, next, have you had any comments?
I'd just say thanks to the agenda committee for putting along the agenda. I always, you know, the five-minute rule always kind of holds. I mean, most people are nervous to talk to a group of people, and I didn't know we talked to a guy. So, you know, I'm saying, yeah, five minutes are ready, nervous, so let's make them comfortable, relax. And I'm not saying they'll talk for an hour and a half, but that's your, you know, say that kind of thing. And I didn't know we had a policy for that also, also, you know. You know, maybe just tweaking that policy, working with Dr. Carlin, who personally makes it more comfortable for people to come to the discussion, but they want to. Thanks.
And it's awful for us to be concerned that we treat every comment, every person wanting to make a comment with the same respect and timeline as everyone else. So, I'm glad we talked about it. Thank you for finding the policy and raising that up. Anything for a board open discussion? We have a board meeting for a report, but just as a reminder, the Crystal Apple Dinner is November 19. And we've got some excellent candidates, as always. I'm really excited about them. And if you saw the video, videos of them announcing it, WowSofus was probably the best because the drum line started playing for Roy when they walked in, so that was kind of cool. But, so if you're interested, you can purchase tickets from the Chamber of Commerce. Usually we get as stable, don't we, if there's enough interest, so.
Yeah, we do RSV, we do Joe Anne, we'll do something in the city right now, so you get a good count. But sooner you can learn about it, the better.
I believe it's at six o'clock at the Clarion. It's the twentieth anniversary. They're inviting all of the former Crystal Apple winners to come back. And it should be pretty cool. We need a table, guys, let's step up on this one. It's as exciting and motivational as going and visiting your school. It really does re-fire you up for what we're doing. It's pretty cool.
Changing to a different event certainly was won out by the justices at high school. That was a very successful event. Particularly, I wasn't involved in any of that, but somebody was really on top of it to allow them to break up and sort of disperse amongst the schools, to sort of maximize their benefit of being a garden city for the benefit of the students. So, I'm just totally impressed, and I thought it worked very well. I'm like, did these kill mine? Of course, with our contact from the State Supreme Court was phenomenal. We worked with Renee Scott, was our point person, and did an outstanding job. And we had students who experienced assemblies and got to interact with justices. We had seven student ambassadors that got to meet the justices personally, that were selected, I believe, by the staff at the high school. And lots of our students came and viewed the session, the oral argument session. So, I agree, it was wonderful, and Renee. And a lot of people in the district also helped, our theater people, Mr. Berl held the live streaming, Mrs. Burton's students provided the catering, and the list goes on and on and on. But we were really happy to be able to host. But the best part was to thank our kids, and they really came out, and so.
So, pictures.
You know what, I think you get those, I haven't seen them. The only one I've got is the one I took with Jean and Laura at the court, I thought.
Yeah, I mean...
Yeah, because we had two student photographers that they were talking to. And I think we handed them a jump drive or a CD full of all the... And I think we handed them a jump drive or a CD full of all the pictures that were taken.
Like, and Jean recommended, we need a flat paper, right? And I'd like something out here. I received a letter from Chief Justice Ness at the office, not necessarily related to this part of my job, commending us and saying what a great experience and how flawlessly it went out off and without a hitch. And it's like, all we had to do was show up, it was great. So I think we've impressed seven people. And even though they've gone out across the state to do this before, this was the first high school they ever did this at. So I think that's something that we need to continue to celebrate and be public about, so it's pretty awesome.
Welcome back for another event.
Well, I think it inspired a lot of students to consider that we need to, we don't like that, they went into law or early work or something. It's just something that they have gotten out of the board, so it's great that they can get into schools and it's been realistic.
I appreciate them writing the newspaper and thank you for the support of that discussion.
I'll have to watch and see the outcome of those oral arguments.
I know, I want to know, definitely. Kscourts.org, every Friday between 9:30 and 10:00 a.m., where lawyers patiently waiting for the new cases to come out, so. So if you check it out, we will know. So we go all up and check it out? I will. Anything else?
Just, I think it's notable, the busy time, parent-teacher conferences came and went. And that's such a, this year was a little earlier than last year. I thought it worked well, particularly at the high school where it brought, as far as parents, but hopefully it worked well across the district. And I just, an important time for communication and everything I've heard seemed to go well. Who knows, to the teachers and everybody involved in that process.
Anything else?
All right, we're going, sorry. Lots of activities going on, lots of kids traveling all over the state. Do want to give a shout out to our volleyball team who qualified for the state tournament first time, I think, in 10 years. We had great results with cross-country. Our band is kind of there. Challenging week for their three different competitions. And I know they haven't heard results from that half, but I know they received a lot of it at the LAC festival, so they're certainly on the right track. So our debaters and forensic teams were busy. I think I got three or four emails with different results, so they've got kids out and doing well qualifying for their state competition already, so lots of great things happening.
And the hatchet game is Friday.
Correct. Come early and get a good seat.
Well, this will also depend on whether or not we go to the state, correct?
I haven't seen the exact information, but I think we in here will, I don't believe it will be pretty important for postseason applications.
Good luck to everyone on the field and behind the instrument and debating and forensics. The next meeting of the Board of Education will take place on Monday, November 16th, 2015, at 6:00 p.m. in the board meeting room, the Educational Support Center. I believe we have a need for an executive session about 30, do you think?
I move that the Board of Education go into executive session at 2:00.
Let's do some goat noodle time.
7:55, on the purpose of discussing matters of non-elected personnel and their contractual obligations because of this matter discussed in the open session. It might endanger privacy, but let's discuss some of the Board of Education's reasons to open the session at 2:20.
There's a motion to move into executive session, is there a second? Second by Tim, all those in favor, please raise your hand. For those same side, motion carries. Or in recess until 7:55.